Good evening, everyone. We have scheduled a public hearing, May 21st, at 7:30. Chester LeBaron, Delanceys Restaurant. Who's representing Delanceys Restaurant?
Steve Esposito, but I don't see him yet.
That makes two of us.
He told me he would be here, so.
He would be here.
Yep.
Wow. Well, we really don't have anything else on the agenda. Not everyone here would like to talk politics, but I do have a question for our attorney. This was asked. The tape's on?
Yes.
We can ask it anywhere. FEMA or Army Corps of Engineers, who has the federal agencies, who has the most authority?
Over what?
Whatever.
Well, FEMA has no jurisdiction over wetlands. They have to do solely with floodplains. There may obviously be wetlands and floodplains, but wetland authority and enforcement authority is split between the EPA, the Army Corps, and the New York State PDC.
Right, so that's all.
The EPA does very little of the actual wetland enforcement, but they actually have co-authority.
FEMA actually handles the financial and emergency.
They do map emergency response and what.
Response for emergencies.
But they're not into regulating wetlands as habitats or even the flood protection part of it. They just map them. They don't have any enforcement authorities.
None at all.
Well, they may over violation. I don't even think they enforce violations of floodplains. They leave that to the local. I think they.
Yeah.
I did get word about that. There you go. You do have a request for an extension of approval you can attend to.
Or Mr. Body?
Yeah.
Steve's in the parking lot and we opened the public hearing and we're waiting on Mr. Esposito. It was probably the first time he's ever been late.
A pleasure to be here, Mr. Chairman.
You're up, buddy. Don't say. All right. We opened the public hearing without you.
We did.
We did. So I want you to take your time.
All right. You're familiar with the project? The application before you to the public. It's for a construction of a deck off the back of the existing, what I call the Goshen Inn for us Goshen people. And actually, if you might, I'll bring it right up. Existing conditions, driveway. The application before the board is construction of a deck which will be 15 by 40 off the back facade of the rear dining hall to view the ponies going around the track. Also, part of the application is additional landscaping and paving restoration and striping. Not part of this application is extensive remodeling inside the restaurant area by the applicant. The applicant is Delanceys. They're moving from the CBS Plaza to this space happily, and that's it. Any questions?
Would you comment for me?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Not here in my mayor all capacity. I'm here in private citizen capacity tonight. For the record, Kyle Roddy, 66 St. John Street, Goshen, New York, 124. Just some comments very briefly. Certainly, given the area that this is located in, I think that it's very important to stress providing adequate protection to the neighbors in terms of, so it's not going to be any nuisance on those that it might be around. I know that previous users of that building have been very frustrating to the neighbors there. The police have gotten complaints. This has been documented. I think what's different here as in the past is that this is someone that's going to be held accountable for the first time, someone that's going to be there, and if certain rules aren't followed, then they'll be responsible for those. I think that putting certain things in place that this board could or could not discuss will protect the neighbors, and I think that there's a matter that can take place in terms of providing protection to the neighbors and allowing this to move forward. You know, certainly, the economy's challenging right now locally, nationally, but locally, specifically, given the county behind. I think the fact that a well-known and successful establishment is going to be staying in the village and keeping jobs local and providing service local is a good thing, but really what draws me to this and why I individually have support above this project is really the idea of having a deck outside highlights, I think, what Goshen is all about. When you talk about branding the village, you talk about the tribe track, laying on the trotter, washing the horses. I think highlighting that is a way that doesn't just provide service through the restaurant guests, but also highlights Goshen. And anyone that comes to this restaurant from outside the village will then see potentially for the first time what we have to offer. You know, I think it's unfortunate how little the average resident really spends time at the track and goes to it when there are races and things like that, and I think that that's really something that Goshen can boast about even more. And I think something like this would be a positive thing for the village, and it would help with our branding internally and externally and be a beneficial role overall to our economy. And just to underscore what I started with, you know, I think that there are certainly things that need to be in place to protect the neighbors there, but I'm not overly concerned about that because this is a legitimate business that is a tribe and true quantity locally and has done well, has a good product, and has no issues previously that I'm aware of at least. Thank you. And I'm going to be heading to work, so I'm going to head.
Can I just ask you if you could be more specific about protections in place? You know, I know, you know, when we dealt with previous restaurants, there's been issues of smoking and closing times on windows open and stuff like that. What are you referring to specifically?
Oh, I think I'm just saying, you know, in terms of the volume of noise that could be coming off the property if there was people outside, and if there were certain things in there with hours that were discussed, certainly, it's not my position to put forward specific suggestions. I just know those things have been discussed in the past and something that, you know, you wouldn't allow people out there until, you know, 12:30 at night, really, you know, in my opinion, anyway. So I think certain things like that, a lot of which is already in our code, which is enforceable. And I think the problem in the past is even though it's been enforceable, the person that was doing the violating of the code hadn't been there to actually take the punishment for it, right? So, Steve.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Over to the public. Any comments? Mr. Chairman. Daniel McMahon, 20 Hattfield Lane. Ted McMahon? Daniel. 20 Hattfield Lane, Goshen, New York. Vice President for Hotel Operations for Somnus Hospitality. We own and operate the company in Goshen. As the mayor said, this really speaks to our unique village. I bring in 40,000 guests a year to this village, and I can't tell you how many love Delanceys and love what the Betro's do. And these are guests that are coming in, these are contractors that are spending their money here. They're not going to TGI Fridays or Outback in Middletown. They're spending their money here in Goshen at Delanceys at a great establishment. And I can't tell you how many in the past few months prior to the fixes at CBS have told me, Dan, you know, we love Delanceys, but we can't bring our cars over there. And I think that this is a great thing for the village. I'm a village resident myself. I have a house on Golden Hill Avenue, and I think that the applicant is a man of integrity, and it's a great business, and I don't think there will be any problems if this planning board says, you know, there's certain restrictions to the time of month that you can dine outside, et cetera, et cetera. He has spent a lot of his own money fixing up a building he doesn't own because he wants to keep his business here in Goshen, and that's all that I have to say about that. Thank you. Yes, your name, please?
Yes, William DeProspo.
William DeProspo.
D-E-D-R-O-S-P-O. Mr. Chairman, DeProspo Patrizio Almango. I'm an attorney and one of the owners of the building, a 42-part place which is located, as you all know, directly next to the applicant establishment. If you'll just bear with me, even though I'm a licensed attorney, this is generally not the forum in which I appear, so I've written down some notes, so if you'll just bear with me.
Take your time.
Just like to state our position. Mr. Chairman, as a preparatory comment, the fact that a restaurant or a series of restaurants existed with an approved occupancy of 292 seats as the proposed plan represents does not, in my respectful opinion, mean that this restaurant has the right to that high degree of intensity unless there has been a prior ZBA variance, of which I am not aware. If there is such a variance, Mr. Chairman, it ought to have been identified so that this board can respectfully determine the continued viability of that variance and whether any noted conditions must be observed. If indeed there is no variance, then the prior intensity of use has no right to continue as the prior restaurant use at this site has not existed for far more than one year, which would clearly constitute an abandonment of that intensity of use. This abandonment effectively deprived the applicant of the prior intensity of use and any continuing non-conforming use status. In that case, the restaurant should be limited in the seating capacity to the use that can be accommodated by its current parking availability, which is very limited, as I will outline momentarily. As a general proposition, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, the traffic is a great concern for myself and for my business and for my clients. Clearly, a busy establishment will increase traffic greatly. As it is, there is a very limited number of parking in and around our office during working hours. As you all well know, it's in a historic church architectural district, and across the way at the church happens to be a day school. There are many small children there out on the playground. I haven't done any additional research, but I'm going to look into it. I'm not even sure it's legal to have a bar serving alcohol right next to a school. I haven't had time to look at that, but clearly, that's right across the street. I also think that should be a very serious safety and traffic concern for the village, having a very, very busy establishment, having patrons going in and out, and having very large delivery trucks going in and out when there are small schoolchildren right across that narrow street. As you all also well know, the county office building is across the street, the 1887 building. That creates a great deal of difficulty for the use of parking during the day. Indeed, many of the county employees come over and use that parking lot. That's been an ongoing problem for us. We certainly don't have the will to enforce that, to track down license plates and to chase county employees out of the parking area. Indeed, lawyers and many professionals using the surrogate court often park along the side of that building, which takes up many additional spaces as well. My own firm and my business, we utilize a minimum of six parking spaces, many times upwards of 10 to 12 spaces when we have depositions and or closings. These are typically held in late mornings and or early afternoon at the height of what would be the restaurant's lunch hour, which would create more congestion. It's not clear from my review of the plans whether or not the parking will be hindered or limited by this proposed deck area. Clearly, the cars are not going to be allowed to park under the deck. I couldn't really tell from the plans where the parking was going to be vis-à-vis when the deck is supposed to be installed. Also, I would note on a quick review of the village's zoning regulations concerning parking, it doesn't appear to me, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, that there is sufficient parking for the intensity of use intended, nor has the applicant identified in his plans the parking demands that must be considered. By way of example, I would respectfully ask you to consider the following. One, there is a cross-easement between my property and LeBaron's property that allows me to use the parking on his lot. My right to use the parking spaces on the LeBaron property site must be considered in the parking calculation relevant to the effective number of spaces that the Delanceys needs to accommodate its proposed restaurant use. Number two, it appears that the village's parking regulations prohibit parking on driveways or entrance/exit lanes, and the plan appears to indicate that there are eight parking spaces along the proposed one-way out driveway or accessway. These should be eliminated and a new conforming calculation proposed by the applicant. Three, the parking regulations also appear to require that when any lot contains two or more uses or multiple uses in a single structure, each having different parking requirements, the parking requirements for each use must be applied. The building proposed for the Delanceys Restaurant also includes the uses of apartments and offices in that same structure. The applicant must identify all such uses within the building and their intensity of use, and then calculate the necessary parking requirements for those uses. These must be added into the mix and determine how many spaces remain for the new proposed restaurant use. Number four, unless there is a ZBA variance regarding the restaurant seating capacity, it does not appear that the 52 parking spaces shared with my property and the residential slash office uses in the same building are sufficient to support the proposed restaurant seating of 292 seats. The applicant should be required to make the necessary parking calculations in accordance with the zoning code and revise its proposed restaurant seating capacity accordingly. I ask that the building inspector in this board respectfully take a very hard look at the limited parking availability and the proposed intensity of use that clearly hobbled this application. In addition, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, on the proposed plans, there's a proposal to put, well, first of all, to make the center roadway a one-way roadway and to have a loading dock in front of what would be the entrance to the restaurant. It's a very, very narrow roadway. Even during construction, we've already had numerous problems of trucks parking there refusing to move even when we've asked. I don't have the type of business where I'm going to be able to go out there and please loading trucks coming there and parking. I assume, not that I've ever been in the restaurant business, that they're going to try to make their deliveries before the restaurant opens up for the lunch, for the lunch service. I don't know that this restaurant serves breakfast, so if the trucks, the loading trucks are there, 8:30, 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock, that's really at the height of our business, and there's not going to be any ingress or egress because the delivery trucks are going to be right there. So having a loading dock there, as far as I'm concerned, is completely unacceptable. Also, this proposed loading dock is directly adjacent to our handicap parking spaces. I will point out to the board that we handle many personal injury cases. We have many very seriously injured clients who need to use the handicap parking spaces in the ramp, and our clients will be inconvenienced as well if they have to park other places and traverse the parking lot as proposed by the applicant. Also, the parking, as my view of it, as proposed by the applicant, seems to be unrealistic. The spaces will not allow for vehicles to safely get in and out and allow them to turn. It is unclear from the plans as to whether or not the curving is proposed or if this is a property outline only. I couldn't tell from the plans. We had a problem with Mr. LeBaron when we moved into the property and indeed where Mr. Esposito has drawn a line, and it may very well be a boundary that he's referring to, Mr. LeBaron illegally put up barriers which just coincidentally happened to coincide exactly where Mr. Esposito has drawn the line, so I don't know if they're proposing that. We had to get Mr. Cuffini to come over with heavy equipment to remove that. Noise generally in the deck specifically. We've already had numerous issues with the noise and disturbances coming from the restaurant. We've been forced to keep our windows closed due to shouting and screaming of the workers. One of my partners has been subject to cursing and harassment by one of the workers, which we deem to be completely unacceptable. The Delanceys Restaurant at its present location is full of people who congregate outside of the restaurant to smoke, discarding their cigarettes on the sidewalk of the Goshen Plaza. You can go take a walk up there. There's no reason to believe that this will not continue at the new location, and indeed, we will be unable to open our windows, and we'll have smokers in their butts all over our property because that's right where the front entrance of the restaurant is. It is also likely that they'll walk onto our property and smoke on our deck and area when we're closed, but they're open because we generally close at 6 o'clock. Their proposed deck, it seems from a few of the plans, will impede the parking area and will undoubtedly create a great deal of noise by outside diners, especially the bar patrons. Also, it is likely that either recorded or live music will spill out onto this deck, which will only aggravate an already terrible use. Finally, there is a letter in the file from the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation Historic Preservation, dated May 3rd of 2013. That letter withholding any recommendation and or approval until such time that plans including windows to be installed are presented. As far as I know, I didn't see anything in the file, but those plans have been presented. There's no evidence this has been done. The office, the state office, had not signed off on it yet. Indeed, the windows have been replaced in the restaurant without permission of the state. Also, and I've been given permission to bring this up, I've spoken with Bernie over at the Historic Track. He had another meeting. He was going to try to come over. They are very, very concerned about the negative impact that this restaurant will have on the Historic Track, specifically, as you all well know, there's a very, very short racing season. The Historic Track depends on that very short racing season. There's no reason to believe that many hundreds of people will go over to that restaurant. They'll be viewing the races from there, not going over to the track. They won't be paying admission. They won't be joining in the concessions, and they won't be engaging and helping fund the track. And as you well know, it's a very, very short racing season. Bernie said he was going to try to come over to express the track's concern about the negative economic impacts that the restaurant would have on the track. Therefore, I respectfully request that this application be denied in its current form, and at minimum, the application should be revised to conform to the village zoning code restrictions, and that the hearing be adjourned so that we have more time to review such modifications and respond. And I'd also point out that Mr. Golden, who's representing us, was unable to appear tonight because he had a conflict, and I would respectfully ask that he have an opportunity to address this board on our behalf as well. So I thank you for your patience and for allowing me to address the board.
Thank you. Any other comments? Your name, please, sir?
Ken Skyer, 20 Kelsey Lane, Goshen, New York. The mayor shares a lot of my concerns that I'm probably, well, I am the only resident that lives as probably as close as Mr. DeProspo's business. So currently, the building is used from time to time on the weekends, so there's lots of parties there. They do go till well after the night, but the noise is contained inside, you know, from time to time, depending on the beat of the drums or whatever, you can kind of hear that. I'm concerned about the deck and the hours of operation, but that, so if that can be shared, that would be great tonight. But so I'm concerned about the noise that will be coming off of the deck and how, at what point. I'm a village resident all of my life and try to support every local business, one with form or another, and I have had many fine meals at the Delanceys, so I'm actually looking forward to being able to walk there rather than to drive my car through that parking lot. But so with that said, though, what I am concerned about the noise, I am also concerned, it's my understanding that the hearing is supposed to clear up some things, and as Mr. Prospo has already said, they've already started to replace windows, and that concerns me that something has been done without the approval, so I'm concerned about that. And this evening, I kind of just stopped by. I live on a private road in the village of Goshen that for the last 20-something years I've been trying to solve that problem. But so many a time, people will come down that private road, go through the back of the parking lot and into the Goshen Inn property to get either out to Park Place or to, I don't know where they're going, but they do seem to do that. So I'm concerned about the traffic. I kind of looked at the way that the parking plan goes, so hopefully, it will be keeping people from going that way, but it won't stop people, I guess, from going at least and then turning to turn around and go back out. But so that's a concern of mine. The other concern that I have is that as part of some of the work that they have done there already, chain link fence went up around, I guess that's the contained garbage or something? So the chain link fence is on part of the right-of-way that exists on maps. I do have a survey that can show you where the lane actually extends. I mean, things don't always appear to be the way they are, so that is one of my concerns, that due diligence doesn't seem to be performed on that chain link fence and sited it on part of the road right-of-way. And it appears that some asphalt or work that was done in the parking lot has been actually dumped on the Historic Track property. So I guess I'm concerned as a neighbor that here are things where they haven't even gotten the approval yet to go forward, and things are being done, and as a neighbor, what other kind of inhospitable things might be done there? So those are the things that I am concerned about. I do have pictures if you'd like to see. I can present the survey.
And you mentioned something about a chain link fence.
Where is it? Well, this is the dumpster.
Right. It's dumpster enclosure, so it's not there.
According to this plan. I can show you.
Actually.
This is how 400 Kelsey Lane goes to where.
Kelsey Lane actually defends.
Earlier.
Yes.
Correct.
So what is the purpose of the fence?
I'm assuming it's to enclose garbage. Should I keep parking? What is the purpose of Kelsey Lane?
No, the fence.
The fence is brand new.
It's an enclosed, well, hold on. What is the fence for?
Dumpster enclosure.
Dumpster enclosure.
Okay, so we know what it's for, but it's not in the right location. According to this map. Here's a map of Kelsey Lane. Here is to orient you. This is the lane coming down from South Third Street, and this is Mr. LeBaron's property right here. So this corner here is this corner here, right there. Correct. Now, Kelsey Lane is. This is not me. This is me.
This is the old go back.
The go back.
It's a partial reference. It's just a normal fence.
Yeah, so people come down, right now, people are always coming down the lane and either going out to the former GoVAC McCallum thing, or some people even go a little bit further and then try to go out to the back of the surrogate court. I've seen some come to here and then this direction. So I'm just concerned about, you know, egress and ingress over a private road that, you know.
Should they do this before they realize that it's a private road? Is that, is that where they turn around?
Yeah, sometimes they, I don't know what the reason is for people going up and down it, but I mean, it's clearly, you know, a dirt road. It's not paved or anything. It certainly doesn't look like, I mean, it does have a street sign for 911, but it doesn't have, no, it's private. It's a private road. Here is actually Mr. LeBaron's survey when I'm trying to do an improvement in the lane orientation.
Do you want to come and look at this?
So here's a survey which Mr. Esposito put the, you know, before. So this is a survey that I received, that we get from Mr. LeBaron, showing where the Kelsey Lane comes to.
And you're saying this is over here?
The dumpster enclosure is here.
Who wants this right way?
The Kelsey Lane is owned by the First Presbyterian Church. It's a piece of property that is unwittingly, back in 1804, when it was saved out, the church intended it to be a village street, as other streets have been improved over time. It hasn't. Here's the fence on the, here's the sign that is on this curving cut here.
This is a sign?
This sign is on the, on the, on the, on the property.
County's property.
On the property.
And there's. So this fence is right on this line.
Correct. I mean, it's a negligible thing, but again, one of the, my concerns is the fence is already gone up before approval for this plan has got it. And the other thing that concerns, what's, this black top is? This is the black top of the Goshen Inn.
Oh, you're looking.
You're looking. You're looking at the track, actually. You're looking, you're looking, Mr. Wood.
So where's this here?
That's the post to a sign that says that this is county property.
And this?
That is the curb here.
Okay. Oh, okay. So the fence is here.
Correct. Correct.
Actually, the old, old...
It's here, right here.
Okay. Oh, is that, is that a slab you have on the fence? Is that what I'm looking?
It's, uh, it's, it, there's a slab, but it's, yeah, rather than being on grass.
I can't, I can visualize the mansion there, but, but it's, um, it's, it's a square, I'm trying to imagine, and you're saying it's here?
Yes. Here is the concern that I also have, this is the, right here, this is, uh, Historic Track property, and this is the asphalt and everything from excavation around here, so... Which is, well, it's right here on the, on the curb, it's right up against the fence.
See?
I'm sure I'm looking at you. Well, I think this wouldn't matter, I mean, if, if, there's, if it's on...
It's a propaganda move.
Mr. Chairman, if this construction degree left over from any of the contractors, obviously that will all have to be cleaned up prior to addition to the CO. Uh, and I would expect that, you know, there'll be inspection from my office issue, I will be the building inspector and quite possibly the village engineer, uh, prior to any additions of the CO. So, that's good info.
Again, my concern is, uh...
I have, I have some more questions about the noise. I know Mr. DeProspoo brought that up and Mr. Skyer, Skyer?
Yeah.
Brought it up. Um, so, there's noise going on now on the deck?
Well, there's no deck, the deck is no built. The deck isn't built, but there's noise, well, Mr. LeBaron rents out the dining room, the glass room, and then, uh, for parties, private parties.
Right.
And so, uh, virtually every Saturday evening, there is a, you know, a Mexican coming-of-age party, and there, you know, depending on, uh, the time of the year, uh, it's either quieter or can be loud, and it goes till very late at night.
But the partying is outside, is that what you're...
No, no, it's inside, but you can, you can still hear it. And so, now, when it's moved out on to a deck, it now just becomes exasperated. And, uh, so my, my concern is, if the deck is there, how much, uh, how late will, I mean, you know, I know that the bar area stays open late, but, you know, I don't know what the...
Another question that I have is, um, from Mr. DeProspoo, you said that you have, um, an easement, a cross-easement with the parking?
Correct.
Can you tell us more about the terms of that? I mean, is it really loose or...
No, it's, it's a reciprocal easement that, and it's very easily explained, um, I can use every single parking space, uh, in the lot, and they can use every single parking space in the lot, it's just, it's a recip, it's a reciprocal easement.
And has it been working?
Uh, well, it has been because there hasn't been any, any restaurant use, that's, you know, so, so it's been great. Um, to tell you the truth, it's been a nightmare, and they're not even open, you know, they have, um, they have workers there who bring, who bring their cars and trucks and everything, and then they have delivery trucks. They don't even have, you know, 52 spaces taken, but just in the area that they park, you, you can't move, and they refuse to move their cars, you know, and then they show up with their Mercedes or like their big thing, and they don't, they don't wanna move them. I've asked them on numerous occasions, listen, I'm a, I'm a small business owner, it seems to me, I don't expect them to carry heavy machinery or equipment or supplies across an entire parking lot. I thought it was a reasonable request, I asked them, you bring it up to the front of the building, and you carry the stuff in, and you then just move the empty truck. And, you know, I just kinda thought that was a reasonable way to approach it. That wasn't good enough, the truck has to stay there. So, and the reason why I, I bring this up is because this is the owner of the establishment, and I'm very, very concerned about how the business is gonna be run if they're allowed to continue along this vein. That, that, that's my concern. Um, frankly, if it, things had started otherwise, um, you know, who knows? But they don't seem, they don't seem to wanna, wanna be good neighbors, as, as Mr. Skyer, um, has indicated, and it's, it's a problem.
You mentioned the, the easement. Is the easement on right-of-way for, for cost to, to move on for parking?
Just, just, just parking, just parking.
Well, I, I'm confused. In other words, you have, say, 20 spaces, he, he has 52, well, then, can you use his spaces and he can use yours?
Well, it's, it's an interesting question, because frankly, up until they proposed putting the parking spaces, there really aren't any parking spaces, it's just kinda like an area. You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
So, I, I don't wanna mislead you and give you a answer, because the fact of the matter is, there haven't been any, there aren't any parking spaces there, number one.
There's no designated parking?
Definitely, correct, thank you, thank you, Mr. Lewis, no designated parking spaces, um, and there hasn't been a problem, so, you know, we just park, and then a couple of the, I assume that their tenants, uh, park. And just by way of clarifying, I think it's important to know, because there has been an abandonment of use, what Mr. Skyer is referring to is not a restaurant use, uh, Mr. LeBaron apparently let some of the local, um, people that he dabbles with use that back room for parties, it's not a restaurant. I don't know whether or not he charges rent, I don't even know if it's a private use, but he charges rent. But just, just to be clear, just to be clear, there's no service, serving of food or anything like that, they bring it in and everything, and frankly, that's another problem that we have, because there's litter and debris, and beer bottles and dirty diapers, uh, all over the place, you know, it's, it's just been a, it's been a, it's been a constant problem.
There, there have been, um, a few restaurants in there, though, in the past.
Yeah, yeah.
Park Place, and I forgot all the names of them, and so that cross-easement has existed over the years?
It has.
And the parking spaces were designated, and so they were actually painted for a while, and...
They're still painted.
And they're, they're still painted?
Well, just, they just recently painted it in, in the back. Um, but that, but again, they, they've abandoned the use for many, many years, um, and I think, you know, you could, you have able counsel here who can, I will be up here before, before the ZDA as well, um, to express our concerns.
Bill in North Shore, I guess you could tell you that the building inspector has issued an opinion to this board that the restaurant use has been in continuous operation, and it's his call, not the plan.
Okay, well, we can, we can litigate that, because with all due respect to Mr. Lewis, that's just, that's just an outright lie. No, I, no, I, I'm, that's just an outright, well, I, it, it is, because it hasn't been in use, because I've been there for many years, and I like Mr. Lewis, and I have a great deal of respect for him, but if a representation was, was made, with all due respect, that has just, it's incorrect, that has not been in continuous use, that's with all, and if Mr. Lewis were here, I would say that, because that just happens to be a fact, that's not even arguable. It has not been used for at least two years, at least. With all due respect to Mr. Lewis, and, and I like him a lot, but that's...
Well, I mean, if this, if this is gonna go to litigation, it's out of our hands, but, yeah, that would have to be proved.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's, absolutely, and I would, I would certainly challenge the applicant to bring in the, the receipts of any restaurant that has been in continuous use for the past two years, I'd be happy to take a look at it.
Good.
Mr. DeProspoo?
Yeah, yes.
Your, your, uh, access to those parking spaces, is an easement on the driveway? To get in there?
Yeah, you have the donut, I think.
You have your own driveway, no? No, we don't, we don't.
Does it comment, does it comment, uh, easement?
Yeah.
You have an easement over, over the driveway to the parking spaces that you own, that's on your property, plus the other...
Well, it, it, as I say, it's an easement. Mr. LeBaron, there's another problem that we've had, Mr. LeBaron, under the terms of the easement, um, is responsible for the upkeep and the maintenance of all, all of the property, okay? And he's failed to do that, and it's been in disrepair, and we can't get him to do anything, so we've had to undertake to do our own plowing and everything like that, but under the terms of the easement, the owner of the Goshen Inn is responsible for the upkeep and the, uh, plowing and everything like that, but Mr. LeBaron is nowhere to be found, and we have to, we have to run a business.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Any other comments?
I found a better picture.
Skyler?
Found a better picture of the, um, just to give you a better perspective of that pass. There's the inn in the background, there's the fence.
It's in the far corner.
Yeah, it's here.
Yep. What is that post for?
The sign.
Is that the sign?
That's the sign for the, on the corner here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comments?
I'd like to respond.
Your name, please?
Joe Metro, I own the Lancy's, you know, I own the Lancy's. I'd like to respond to some of Mr. DeProspoo's comments. I've been there for, every day for, since we started construction. I've seen him, I've been cautious, hi, hey, doing, never once has he approached me and said anybody was doing anything there that was, anything to what he said. Two, he said that Mr. Bernie, Mr. White is totally against this, I met with the board today, the entire board met and unanimously passed and accepted the fact that we were moving in. In fact, they asked me to rent the room to the Amy Bullcrest luncheon on July 5th, so I have to say, I'm not sure where he's getting this information from, but it's inaccurate. All I've done so far since I've been there is beautify the property that's been abandoned. I put every single penny that I have, I didn't ask Mr. LeBaron for it, 'cause I knew how he was, and I, he wouldn't, he wouldn't do it. I paid for the paving in the parking lot, I paid for the construction of the facade, I paid for everything, the windows, and by the way, the windows were approved by this board, we didn't put them in, at the last meeting, if I'm correct.
We've had the, uh, Weldon App's comments back to this board, yes.
Okay, but at the last board meeting, you gave me to go ahead and go ahead and put the windows in.
Correct.
Okay, so I, I just wanted to stand clear. So, I've done nothing...
Mr. Chairman, I, I would just respectfully, just ask the applicant to just address the board with all due respect.
I, I'm addressing comments, that's all.
Thank you.
Address the board.
So, I, I have done nothing other than try to beautify a piece of property that's been abandoned, you know, to, to a certain extent, have me cleaned up, I've done everything on my own dime, I'm not asking Mr. LeBaron for a penny, and I've done everything that I possibly can do, and I think I've done it the correct way. I didn't go in and put a deck in, I didn't go in and put windows in, I did absolutely nothing before I approached every single board in this town. I paid a lot of money, I paid, I went to the planning board, I went to the zoning board, I went to Weldon App, the ADD board, I met with Mr. Lewis, I've done nothing other than been upfront with what I'm trying to do, and I thought everybody was embracing it. So, if I've done anything that was, that I shouldn't have done, then I apologize to that, but I think I've been following the letter of the law to what I've been guided to do. That's all I say.
Thank you. Any other comments? Board members? No comments?
I still don't understand, um, where the dumpster bed is in relation to, is it on property, off property, is it on someone else's property?
Steven?
I'll have to, I can't, I can't tell you whether, I can tell you where it is on the plan, uh, and then we'll have to...
You didn't install?
Did not install.
Okay, so...
That would be a concern that we would have to, right. Anything that would be an issue that if it's not on the property, it's gonna have to be a crack.
Okay.
Have to go out, make a site, visit, see?
Um, any other questions, board members? Occupancy?
Well, there was a, I, I thought Steve, and I don't know if you may have provided it, what we call the Kelly Jeans analysis?
Correct.
If you had some, two magic dates that you gotta show the use, it was in existence and number, I, I think you have the conclusion in the table, but I don't know that you've received that analysis, I think you need to put it together before we can act.
Uh, actually, the analysis is on the plan, uh, and, uh, first of all, just the, the number of seats, the occupancy is based on COs that were issued by, by the planning department, uh, in 2009 for the restaurant LeBaron, uh, which the record owner of that was Joe LeBaron, uh, who has been continually renting and operating a catering facility out of there. He has his annual fire inspections, make sure that he's up to code, uh, with regards to the, that occupancy, uh, the building inspector conducts those inspections, uh, I'll just leave it at that. He's made, he's made the determination, uh, he's the code interpreter, uh, that they, that the restaurant use has not been abandoned. Um, but I will say that, if you'd like me to respond to a couple of the comments, uh, I do have the comments from the app.
Let me stand corrected, then, if you're basing it on an existing CO for a use that's been continuous, then fine, but we should have something that says that, I'm not questioning.
Well, we do, and you have...
I said on the table, I...
Right, we, we have the COs in, in your file.
Okay.
But I got them from your file, and, and from my file.
Okay.
Uh, and, you know, basically, it's, you know, the restaurant area hasn't changed, the, uh, we're not asking for any, and we're the additional seating, we actually picked up one parking spot with the reconfiguration and, and striping of the parking lot, considering what's existing. Uh, the water usage is essentially, you know, basically the same because the, the occupancy isn't gonna change, uh, sewer usage is the same, the occupancy isn't gonna change, traffic generation, uh, is essentially the same, uh, because the occupancy is gonna be maintained at what was, what was currently permitted, uh, and...
What is the occupancy?
The occupancy is 292 seats. 200% for three areas, you have the bar area, the rear entry, the rear dining area, which is where the deck would be accessing, and then there's, there's another room as well, uh, that's gonna be used for roofs. Uh, and so, the total of those three areas is 292. Uh, and parking, the amount of parking spaces you have are... We're actually, we're, we're, we are, we have one more space than what was previously on the site when the COs were issued for the 292 seats. Uh, so, it's our position that we are not increasing the nonconformity of that provision of the code. Uh, also, you'll see, it adds in practice of this board, is that, you know, I think I've gotten probably three or four restaurants approved in this village, and I don't think this is the first one that actually has parking. Uh, so, you know, we have, um, you know, so we've, we've maintained what was there, uh, we've actually, and I do, I would like to clarify that, I did meet with Mr. DeProspoo's partner, he actually called, and Joe had some questions, but I said, where are you? He was in his office, I said, I'll be there in 10 minutes, and we talked about the cross-easement, I wanted to, I wanted to get his perspective on it, I had a, I had a copy of it, I read it, but I, you know, wanted to hear it from his, his lips. Uh, we also talked about the, the entrance coming in and out, that it should be two-way, uh, I said that I would show on, on the plan that there is two ways, um, and we had an area that was originally, uh, this, in the original plan, that was approved at some point in time, I believe it was probably 1992, it was shown striping and it's called it a loading zone. Actually, the thing that we would call it a loading zone is that we would strike that and call that a no-parking zone. So, this is where Mr. DeProspoo was concerned about loading right here, we're now gonna say, no parking, period, the trucks will now stage, you know, down in here. And again, those deliveries are early, this is the central business district, the strike runs the village between 7 o'clock in the morning and 9 o'clock in the morning, and you'll see Cisco trucks all over the place, delivering to Catherine's, Kelly Jeans, Phil de Sorrow, right downtown, uh, we, I think we can handle a couple of deliveries in a, in a 52-car parking lot that won't terribly inconvenience our neighbors, uh, so I think that's something that can, that's been done when, while Alders was there, uh, it's been there since, well, I've been here for 55 years, so we've been a restaurant there for 55 years. So, we did talk to our neighbor, and, uh, and my, he expressed that I did address his concerns, um, you know, so I'm a little surprised with what we've inherited, but that's finally have, they're, they have their, their property, and they have their rights as well.
The rest of the building, what's the approved use, uh, for the rest of the building?
It's mixed-use building, seriously.
So, what does that mean, mixed-use?
It's always been a mix of office and residential, weblogs and residential. I don't know what the current status is, but that's what it's been over the years.
And it's still being used?
Okay. That way. I think there's a attorney in there, a couple of apartments in there.
The, uh, number of, of seats in the parking, I'm a little confused on that, does, does the number of parking spaces include the offices and the residential area upstairs?
I think the applicant's position is in the year in which the certificate of occupancy was issued for the LeBaron's restaurant, the building department gave consideration to all of the uses that were in the building, and I'm trying to express his opinion, I think I'm doing it accurately, and gave him a CO for a 252...
292.
292-seat restaurant, based upon the same parking layout, less one parking space, and the existing mixed-use of the building. I assume that was done based upon an historic analysis of a nonconforming, because I don't think it complies with the parking requirements by square footage or seats or anything else, 292-seat restaurant, based upon the same parking layout, less one parking space, and the existing mixed use of the building. I assume that was done based upon an historic analysis of a nonconforming, because I don't think it complies with the parking requirements by square footage or seats or anything else. But it's a nonconforming building that's been a restaurant. The building department has ruled continuously since that CO was issued. So the CO exists for 292 spaces, is what the applicant is saying.
292 seats in the restaurant. Is there any requirement for parking spaces for offices and residential, is my question? I don't know the answer to that. That's why I'm asking.
I'm sure there is.
So, if there is a requirement for that, I would like to know what the requirement in numbers are for the offices and the residential units upstairs. If they take up all the parking spaces, then those 52 parking spaces would be for the restaurant.
Certainly, if this building were being built, that's exactly what the applicant would have to do, but the local code, we had this most recently with Kelly Jean, says that when you have a building that doesn't comply, and I'm sure this doesn't comply with the parking requirements for the mixed use in there ever, then you don't have to comply with it. However, what you have to do is an analysis, there's two key years where you have to analyze what was in existence then. And I can only assume that this was done by Ted's office because he issued a certificate of occupancy for the use. The only reason the applicant is here, by the way, is for the deck, for the ADD permit to the outside and for the deck addition to the restaurant. The rest of it, according to what the applicant's obtained from Ted Lewis's office, is it's an existing mixed-use building with a restaurant in place. They want to build a deck, and that requires site plan approval. They wanted to change the windows, that required ADD. Granted the ADD based upon Weldon App's letter and the replacement of the existing. The applicant has responded to SHPO, but that's between the applicant and SHPO, and what's here now is the site plan, the share of the deck. And my other two issues are, I think you've received the Orange County Planning Department report. It says so. I haven't seen it. Secondly, it does require a variance, as you know, and that public hearing, I think, is scheduled for the 29th, but hasn't been held yet. And you cannot act until the variance is granted, so you're going to have to either close the hearing and adjourn this, or if you see fit, keep the hearing open until that date. But beyond that, really what's being proposed, now that I understand the count and the existing certificate of occupancy, is a site plan for the deck and the ADD permit already issued for the replacement of the windows. And if there's some challenge to the determination that was made by Ted Lewis, that's for those who wish to challenge it to bring there, if that's still trying.
Like the placement of the pad for the dumpster?
Those are the site plan elements, sure. Yes, clearly.
And who's-
You're being asked to approve that. That wasn't on the site before. So everything that's new, you have jurisdiction over. The deck, the dumpster area, if they're changing a configuration from, you know, no parking to parking, or parking to no parking, that's part of the site plan element?
So what I'm understanding is that the deck for the dumpster was put in without any approval?
I don't, no, I haven't been there. I don't know. You certainly have not approved the site plan. Unless that was on an old approved site plan or just building it now, I would say that it was-
No, actually, we couldn't find any reference to any dumpster enclosure, and that typically, I know this board requires that for new occupant or new uses. So we proposed a dumpster location in the park one.
Have we seen it on film? Digital. Digital, I'm sorry. I can't.
But if that wasn't on an old site plan, then it was built without an approval, but such things have happened before. It shouldn't have.
I understand where we're at.
Yep.
You know, I mean, you defined where we're at as far as just looking at the deck. That's it.
And any other new site plan elements? The dumpster area, the reconfiguration, if there is one to the parking lot, those things are all part of the site-
So other elements like parking, like whether it was in use for a year?
That's already been determined by the building.
And anybody that has a quarrel with that has to go see the building department, correct?
Right.
Okay.
One point, which was mentioned-
I'm not only saying it for myself.
I know.
I'm saying it.
You're showing one way here. Okay. Better one way. But you mentioned before-
There's a two-way in the main entrance here. So Mr. DeProst-
Just show them here.
This happened after I met with-
Okay.
All right, fine. This is a two-way lane. They have a right to go in and out. And then we also made the concession to make sure that that striking area along the drive would be no parking.
According to my understanding, we can't do anything because ZBA has a correction of variance, number one, and we haven't seen a final site plan.
Your final site plan is in progress.
You have a site plan?
The ZBA has an act.
This one? Well, this has got one-way driveway on it.
That's correct.
This has a loading area, which you said is not good there.
Right.
So this is not a final one?
Is this the final one?
Well, again, no. What we've done is since we made submission, in order to mitigate the concerns of our neighbor, is that we've agreed to put this little arrow here, and take the words "loading" and put in "no parking."
Okay, so I'll ask the question again. We have not, have we seen a final site plan?
What I'm going to ask you tonight, though, is conditional final approval.
Have we, there's my question first.
No, you have not.
Okay.
There's always issues that come up. That's what I'm hearing. Any other comments?
I just wanted to- The parking for 52 that you calculated?
Yes.
Are those, only the spaces that are on your property really include-
Those are only the property.
This line is the property line of the- You have not included the spaces on the-
No, because we still, there's a couple oddballs here that are on the adjoining parts, so we make sure that they align up with the aisle. And whatever's there is there. I mean, we're not changing anything. All this striking will be on the little parent law. Michael? Mike, Phil, I'm sorry.
It's okay. You look like a Mike.
That's okay. With all due respect to Mr. Esposito, my partner, who doesn't practice planning law, asked Mr. Esposito for some information about the plans. It wasn't a meeting and an agreement, as Mr. Esposito incorrectly characterized it. And I am very offended that you would do that, that you would make a representation, that you agreed to something when that is not in fact the case. In addition, with all due respect, the plans that you submitted have all these things on it. So are we supposed to just guess what's in your mind, that you're taking them out of the plans? I don't think that that's a right-
It was Alpia, rather than in another forum. I happen to like Mr. Lewis. There has not been a restaurant. I've been there for two years. And everybody here lives in this village. There is no, has been no restaurant there for two years. None. And I challenge anyone in this room, Mr. Esposito, you included, to tell this board what restaurant has operated there for the last two years. Could you tell the board, please?
I have COs that were issued for LeBaron's.
What restaurant has operated there as-
Bill, let me ask you a question. Hold it. I'm like, hold it.
So, no cross, so reject to me.
So with all due respect, I would like to know what restaurant has been in use for the last year. And if it's not resolved here respectfully, it'll be in another forum, because I just don't think that's a way for a village to do business. I just don't, and I respect your authority, but to act on all untruths is just not right. And I don't think it should reflect poorly on this board, because there has not been any restaurant in use.
But I tried to say before, and I'm not going to argue the point, is that's Ted Lewis's call, not this board's.
No, Mr. Don, I understand that. I understand he made a representation to you, and you have to rely on his representation. That's why I'm respectfully asking Mr. Lewis to explain and to tell this board, and I'm happy to come back and I respectfully ask that the hearing be adjourned, to hear what restaurant has been in operation there for the last several years. I mean, I'm happy to hear that.
We will find that out.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sir?
Well, I know for a fact, Joe, I know for a fact that LeBaron's catering has been existing there. Has a New York State liquor license in place right now as of right now today.
Excuse me.
Phil.
No one's laughing when you were talking.
It has an existing New York State liquor license in place as of right now today, for LeBaron's catering. What constitutes a restaurant? What constitutes a business? Does people have to be open 24 hours a day, seven days a week? I don't know, but New York State believes that there's an existing restaurant and there's a liquor license in place there as of right now.
This will affect the billing department, the village of Goshen billing department, not this board. Michael, anything else?
Well, Steve has asked you for conditional final approval of the site plan.
Well, we still have the public hearing open.
Right, yes. The point I was going to make is, and we talked about this last month, my legal advice to you is you cannot grant a site plan approval conditioned upon the applicant getting a variance. You don't have jurisdiction to act until the variance is obtained. I did say to you in the past that if the applicant wanted to run two side-by-side site plans, one without the deck, one with the deck, but there really isn't any need for the site plan because it's the deck that drives it, you could approve the site plan, say, if it were ready for the dumpster. You already gave them the ADD permit. The interior stuff is all Ted Lewis, and it's well underway. I don't believe you would properly act by granting an approval until the variance is obtained. We thought the schedule was such that the variance public hearing, I think, was supposed to be two weeks ago. It got adjourned for some reason, and now it's on the other side of the fence, and you can't act until it's granted.
What variance did you apply for?
It's actually an interpretation for the deck.
I would suggest that we leave the public hearing open. I think that there's a number of issues that have been raised, some of which are enforcement issues that are not within purview of the planning boards, but there are enforcement issues that it's possible that we can put some controls on in the approval, much like Kelly Jean's. Many neighbors came out and expressed concerns about things like smoking and noise, which are coming up now. So to leave the public hearing open, to look at the controls that this board has power over, and I think that we have to look at some of the institutional history here, because I think between Jerry and me, there are a number of years, and I seem to remember, the approval for, was it Park Place?
Park Place.
And there, but there are things in the minutes, and there are things that were restricting the parking and the ingress and egress, and parking in the driveways. Very specific controls were in place, and I don't know if they've been lost somewhere. And again, it might just be enforcement.
Well, those parking spaces along the aisle have been there for-
I know that they've been there, but I know that they were a contentious issue then, and there was an enforcement problem when Park Place was approved. So I think we would need to look at our minute-
So you want to see if you got the approved site plan for minutes and any resolution?
Right, because I think there were things in the minutes.
There were conditions, I believe, put on. Have they been enforced, or have they been followed?
Right, right. I know that this board looked at this ingress egress carefully, and the parking. So let's just see what that, I mean, we can't approve it anyway, so unfortunately, we're delayed in another moment. Yeah.
Board members? Do we have a motion to keep the public hearing open?
You need to announce that it will be continued to June 25, 2013, at 7:30 PM.
Second.
On the second.
All's in favor?
All right. There will not be another mailing. That's the only announcement.
Public hearing will be extended till June 25.
By the way, the mailings were in order, Mr. Esposito.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
We also have-
Go ahead.
You have the floor. We also have the issue of the tightening of the action.
Oh, I thought we did that last month.
No, no. Well, we would like to, with all due respect, that the board had typed this type-one action under SECPR, the ADD component to the approval. The only threshold in ADD that triggers a type-one action is the demolition of a building.
What?
A demolition of a building. What we're proposing really is not a type-one action, a construction of a six-inch square foot deck, and/or even replacement of windows, which is committed in ADD by property owners.
You're correct. It was after our meeting. I did exchange emails. I thought I copied the board, maybe I did not. But under the SECPR regulations, construction or expansion of a, involving less than 4,000 square feet, as you know, is a type-two action. I had told you that this was a type-one because it involved a building in the Church Park Historic District. When we looked at the SECPR regulations, it says only applications for demolition or removal of buildings within the architectural design district here in the Goshen shall be reviewed as a type-one. So it doesn't, it's actually a type-two action because the deck is under 4,000 square feet. I did confirm that. I thought I copied the board, but if I didn't, Steve was correct. We had already by then sent out the notice, but we haven't heard any response anyway, so. Although, actually, SHPO has a problem.
Right, the notice that, the reason why SHPO responded was that the notice went out without any supportive documentation. So as soon as I got McCune's letter, we put together this APAC that we submitted to the board initially. I sent that out to the incident address.
Did you get comments back?
There's really no jurisdiction of this matter, but we get Weldon's approval for, you approved the replacement of the windows. Weldon approved the replacement of the windows and the door subject to site plan approval of the deck in favorable decision by the town of Goodfield.
When I thought it was type-one, I thought that it should go to the state office of the Star of Preservation, and it did. Steve is correct. He had responded and sent the photos and everything SHPO asked for. But given that this is mere replacement and no demolition or removal of a building, even a contributing structure like this one, it's not a type-one. It's unlisted, so advisory report, if SHPO wants to issue one, they can, but they don't have any jurisdiction to approve it. It's just a replacement of a window. I'm not sure I fully understood the last exchange of letters with Weldon App, but it sounds like he's approved what you're doing. Was there something about some of the materials he didn't care for, or did you-
There is, yeah. You know, I call it the Jetson edition, the 1950 edition in the back. There's a T111 that's something filled in some panels, and he just requested that we don't use T111 around the proposed door.
You wanted something called wood.
Wood. We're going to do wood. We're going to do, I actually, we're going to use birch plywood, and we'll do some raised panels to trim it out. It won't be a continuation of the T111. And he was okay with that.
So what are you looking for?
I'm looking for a public hearing.
He already knows he can-
So I'm looking for the door.
Okay.
All right.
Looking forward to seeing you next month.
All right. Actually, no, I take that back. We're here now, I mean, I think, you know, this is a public hearing. We continue the public hearing. You have before you, and this is our second one here, this is not a new application. You had the same information that I provided to you initially, with the exception of the board member, Tyler. I'd like to talk about it. I mean, I think if, you know, Mr. Vetrow is going to this, going to the gauntlet here to get this deck approved, you know, which I think is a great thing for the village, myself, as the lifetime village president, I'd like to talk about it.
What would you like to talk about?
Well, let's talk about the noise. Mr. Chairman, the first time I was here, you held up a stack of noise complaints that the chief of police gave me. Let's talk about that, because I want to get these all out on the table, get it ironed out to the best extent, so-
Well, you tell us what you're going to do.
What I'm going to do is I'm going to get a respected restaurateur that owns two restaurants in the village of Goshen that, to the best of my knowledge, has not had any trouble with the police. He also owns, runs, operates another business, a restaurant in the village of Florida, and he happens, I happen to know the person that owns the building, that building, and is a client of mine, and all good reports there as well. So I think the issue of the noise, and also I said that the, you know, the windows that we replaced were single-pane windows that had absolutely no noise attenuation whatsoever. The restaurant is not an extension of the bar. The restaurant, the deck is not an extension of the bar. The deck is an extension of the dining room. And I would suggest that if any of you have time between now and the next meetings, you should go in there and see what Mr. Vetrow's done, to that facility, because I think he's done a great job. So we want to come out, he wants to provide an area for people to go out and eat. Now, there are 13 places in the village of Goshen that have outdoor seating. 13. And I don't know, any of them have any problems with the police or any of their neighbors. So we're just going to be a 14th, and if the board has concerns that we can address, as we did with Kelly Jean, as we did in other applications, I would like to hear them.
Well, what is-
We did have a complaint. The gentleman sitting right here, Mr. Scott, complained of noises. Mr. DeProst, complained of noise during the day.
It's a construction job. During the day, you can make, you have the right, between the hours of whatever it is, 7 to 8, whatever little hours are, that you can work. You have the right to work. And you can't, and you don't regulate construction noise because it's a temporary condition. You can mitigate it in some instances, but you're contractor, you're entitled to work.
And nails, saw, wood, you know.
What are your proposed hours of operation?
Monday through Sunday, the restaurant is open from 11:00 in the morning till 9:00 at night. On Friday and Saturday till 10:00 at night. The purpose of the deck is not for bar patrons. It's not somebody going out there to have smoke and a drink. It's specifically for dining. We do have soft music out there, serious- We do have soft music out there, Sirius Radio, there'll be the Sinatra channel, there'll be something like that, there'll be light. Not here to, we're not here to, to put Led Zeppelin up on a, on a band out there and rock it till 2 o'clock in the morning. It's not my business, it's never been my business. We're a restaurant, we're a family restaurant, that's where we make our money. Now, we also happen to cater to off-track betting, because we're an off-track betting establishment, but that's all done in the bar, not out on the deck.
Would that invite the applicant willing to limit the use of the deck hours till 9:00 PM on weekdays and 10:00 PM on Saturdays?
Our restaurant closes at 10:00 PM, but there, there may still be people eating dinner, so I would say I have no problem saying by 11:00 the deck is closed, because the people can come in at 9:45 and get dinner and own the deck. We would have no problem with that whatsoever.
We, we could be setting several conditions.
Do we, what, what's this right now?
I don't think we have to go exactly.
It would be a moot point if variance is not.
The variance is not.
All right. This is like, if you tell them next month, they're probably forgetting for this.
Well, I, I don't have a problem, we're here now and to air out.
Well, I mean, if you, if you, we'd like to know that if there's concerns that we can address them.
So, there are no complaints?
That are, that are, that are reasonable, and that, you know, are, that don't, you know, have a potential manager in the path on this operation. If it's out of operation, will you deter, you know, the Chellows have, you know, if they're out there until 9:00, 10:00 at night, you know, do you expect to have the same?
What about the smoking? Because the, the restaurants in New York are now smoke-free.
Correct.
Right, so people do go outside and litter and smoke. So, do you have any suggested controls over the smoking on the front sidewalk or the back of the building?
We, we can, I can't stop anybody from smoking, but I could, I could point them in the direction that the village sees fit, and to accommodate our neighbors, if they want it on the front of the building, I'm assuming the front of the building is the best, but if somebody tells me differently, we'll accommodate that. You know, we'll put the smoking paraphernalia out there, put your cigarettes out, things like that, to wherever the village wants it to be done, to try to mitigate people from just walking out any door of the restaurant to have a cigarette.
There's actually two small, like, parrots here and here, which are on the front of the building.
I think that's where most of it goes now.
Right here and here. It's actually, we, we, we look a couple streets up there, but I mean, that was some of the, that's one of the areas, actually, one of, one of the two areas that I've brought.
Is the restaurant going to use those front doors?
Well, are, are they going to use the front door?
No, we're not. It's an emergency exit, handicap exit only.
Actually, can't.
And that was one of the issues?
Because, one of the issues, I think you may want to enlighten these gentlemen on the second door. The second door is there for the church.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct, yeah.
The distance from the church?
Distance from the church during services.
Yeah, you have to, the, the New York State requires that, that the serving of alcohol has to be at least 300 feet from door to door, from the church to the, to front door establishment. So, that's why that bizarre little aisle was built, which gave you the 300, the 300 feet, which was done several years ago.
It was bizarre.
Yeah, and it's been there, that's from whenever, yeah, I'm not sure, 17s, yeah.
St. and Bro.
Wow. I wasn't born.
I was talking to him. Any other comments, board members? Questions? Chain link fence will be resolved.
Okay, take a look at the need, we'll take a look at that tomorrow.
Now, there's a private driveway, which Mr. Skyler had mentioned that people drive down, which you have no control over. But can it be blocked off?
It's his, it's access to his, that's, that's.
Kelsey Lane?
Kelsey Lane, no, 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 blocked off at this property line.
Yeah, it sounds like we put a dumpster upon it.
But not really, it seems like the dumpster's.
I don't know where.
Is that on, is that on the Barren's property, it's on?
Jerry, I don't, I'm not, I'm taking a look at it, but there's all these existing trees, and there's a hedge there, a shrub, there's like a Texas hedge, I mean, I don't know, they, they could probably go into the court building, I don't see that they see terrible lot of traffic there, but it's, again, it's a private road, which, you know, we have no control over it.
Okay. Any other comments? Board members? Okay, thank you. We also have something on a letter from Peter Body, Michael?
Yes, you'll recall that there is a pending application by the Scottsdale Office of Park Health, Health Care Project to remap the zone of the area where this approved site plan exists, because that obviously is not a certainty and takes time, Mr. Body has asked in the meantime, the existing approved site plan will expire June 25th, 2013, be extended for a six-month period.
What members, any comments? Do you have a motion for a six-month extension for this application?
No.
Second. Favors?
Aye. That would take you to your meeting of November, and that date is the 19th.
Who made that motion?
Motion was made by Elaine, seconded by?
Who?
Mike?
Okay.
Oh, you, sorry.
Everybody here, Mike?
Uh, do we have minutes? What members review the minutes of April? Actually, we can't vote on it, see, you, me, and the best answer, okay?
And Mike wasn't here. Mike wasn't.
I was in the audience, but I wasn't officially.
We're at the one minute till next month.
We did that last month, didn't we?
Actually, believe it or not, he can vote on the minutes. He may not feel comfortable in doing so.
We did that last month, a month before.
Two months.
I was in the audience.
Oh, oh, you didn't read them?
You don't have to attend a meeting, and you don't even have to be a member of the board.
We did that last month, two months ago, where, where not all members were at the meeting, but we voted on that, yeah.
All right, we can vote on the minutes.
Make the motion, we accept the minutes as submitted. I read them.
Do we have a second?
Oh, wait a minute, I gave you the one minute. I think this is, it's one in April, not March, right?
We have motion, looking for a second. Peter? Michael?
I don't know what I can say, can I take it?
You can, you're, did you take the oath?
Yeah, I believe.
You did take the oath?
I think, I have some.
Want to say it now?
I can take it now.
We've got to use your right name now.
What is your name, did you say?
Peter John Michael Hall.
He's the second. We got him right in here for second, all who's in favor. Okay. Anything else from the, from the board? Any other comments? Do we have a motion to close the meeting? Second?
Second.
Favors?
I.
Jerry, he's in the middle.
On DVR.
It's all mine, it's all mine, I want to watch it.
Last year, the major board on DVR, board member, did you play?
Michael.
Yeah, I was away till the sun.